Good evening, I'd like to open the Deerfield Planning Board meeting, August 5th, 2019, here at 7:02, here at the Deerfield Town Offices. The agenda for tonight is to review minutes if we have them, review some mail, take any public comment, and that would be brief questions or comments from the public that are not already on the meeting agenda. Then we're going to look at some new business. It's new old business. About 198 Mill Village Road, which might have some changes to the project that affect the site plan. So we're going to be presented with these changes and see if there's a need for more review. Then some old business, we're going to continue, the planning board will continue discussion from the previous month regarding possible changes to some of the bylaws, including marijuana establishments, solar electric, lot size and shape, and accessory apartments, and we hope to see if we need to schedule any public hearings on that or not. Then we have two pieces of business that were not reasonably anticipated 48 hours prior to the posting of the meeting, so they weren't on the posted agenda but would like to be able to take them up, and that's two A and Rs, 53 Eastern Ave. and 23 Saw Mill River, or South Mill River. And the reason why we want to do that is because we only have 21 days to take them up, so if they came in even today, it's great if we can get them on the agenda. Then we'll set a date for the next meeting and adjourn. Anything else for the agenda tonight? So do we want to take it in that order, or are people here for the A and Rs? Let me ask that question first. But then there's also people here for the other, but I think the other might take-
This is the agenda, we'd be happy to let them go first.
Alright, I mean, we like to think A and Rs go quickly, and sometimes they do, so let's give it a shot. But before I do that, any comment, any public comment about things that aren't on the agenda tonight? Seeing none. Alright, 53 Eastern Ave. Let me read the thing, and if the person here for that could come up to the table here, that would be great. Want to open that up and-
What's the address again?
So this is from Boron Irrevocable Trust, and it's a 53 Eastern Ave. It's to divide two existing parcels into three new lots, one empty lot, one lot with existing house and one lot with existing garage. All lots meet all current zoning requirements for the Center Village Residential Zone. And I have an application, and a check was submitted to the town, and it was stamped, so I guess it's an official application. So if you can just tell us who you are and tell us what lines are moving on these-
Yeah, no, I'm David Boron, and it's property I grew up on. My father bought it originally from Charlie Dean, and he bought it for a complete homestead, and he always said I had the building lots and one on each side. And we're trying to sell the property now, and we can't get interest like in all the complete unit, so we do have interest in someone for the building lots, or just the house. So we're trying to go ahead and do what we've got to do, because it's costing a lot of money sitting there empty since my mother died in February.
So the location is Eastern Ave., just past Cross Street?
Correct.
Alright, so can we tell what's going on here?
Yep, this is all one parcel of land, and this is the house and garage that they subdivided, added these two lots. So this was the original, but now it's going to be three lots.
But you say you want to divide two existing parcels into three, so was there already two?
Originally, it was a, there was an empty lot on the west side, a building lot was empty, but that was part of the house property, and my father didn't even know that. He thought that was the empty building lot, but the building lot was considered the one that's already, that he has his garage on. So there was like two lots, the house and an empty lot, and then the garage lot was a separate one. So we want to take the first building lot on the west side, so there's a building lot there which is vacant right now, and then the house on a separate lot, and then the garage is another lot. I mean, we'd still like to, still like to sell it as one complete unit, but we'd not get much interest, you know?
And so each one is 100 foot frontage?
Yeah, it meets all the requirements, so.
Again, we're not making them building lots, but they're-
No, but you, we can't, we can't put them as building lots, we can just separate them out into lots for you.
Right.
Doesn't mean that they're building lots, in as far as we're concerned.
I understand that.
Well-
You can do what you want with it, it's just that the planning board's job is not to endorse it as a building lot, but it meets all the requirements, so once this is subdivided, you can go to the building inspector and get it.
Yeah.
Right.
But what we're going to do tonight, if we give it to you-
Doesn't say exactly-
Doesn't say they're building lots, okay?
Right.
Good.
It's not an endorsement of an approval of zoning, but didn't we ask it to say?
Right.
Somewhere it should say that.
This is not, this is not an endorsement-
Planning board endorsement under the subdivision law should not be construed as either endorsement or approval of zoning requirements.
So it's not the wording we usually ask?
No, it's not.
Randy should have known that.
Yep, yeah. Normally, it's a little more specific than that saying that this does not, this does not mean that we're saying it's a building lot.
Right.
Garage is a different structure, we don't care.
Yep.
Now, did you have a tax bill that was the whole thing together?
Tax bill was the empty lot to the west in the house, that was one tax bill. Second tax bill was on the garage lot. It's just a garage, there's no house on the-
Okay, so this was-
Two car garage.
Considered one, and that's two, and now it's going to be three.
So it looks like you might have changed the lines on the lots?
Yeah, what it was is the deck was the existing property line that splits the house and is attached on the two car garage.
Yep.
The existing line actually, it didn't give it the right setback from the deck.
I see that dash line going there.
Surveyor suggested to move it 10 feet over past the deck because the garage lot is quite a bit larger.
Anyways, yep.
So you're going to make three lots from two?
Yeah, so that is what they're saying here, so.
Yeah, okay.
I move to approve the A and R for the Boron Irrevocable Trust.
I second it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Zero? Zero, so you got it?
Four zero zero. Today's date is eight five-
So who's got that Mylar? Oh, okay. So let's just write, I'm just going to add on here, not endorsement of a building lot.
Did you sign that, Max?
No, I was just going to let you guys do them all, and then-
Okay, alright, I was, well here, I'll pass, I'll sign these two here and hand them to you, and then you can sign.
Okay.
There's two.
Does that mean that when somebody wants to actually build on that lot, they would take their plans and this sure man take it for the building spectrum for final approval?
Yeah, he would be the one to determine whether it's a building lot or not.
Like is he the enforcer of these, showing, or is he the enforcer of the code?
Yep.
And then that way, they might have to go look at the property and make sure that it is a building lot, not just the plan.
Yeah, it is. How many do we need to sign, John?
We need three, right?
This is all signed here with all four signatures.
Good.
Busy, huh?
I don't go so fast nowadays, so I'm always busy.
I don't either.
Alright, so here you can-
John signs those if you need them.
Oh, no, these need to get-
Are those, are those all signed?
If we sign two more of them and give it to him, he can-
Okay.
Keep these.
Wish I could say I crashed something, but I didn't, feet went out and under me.
Yeah, I'll just roll it back up and do it.
That dentist is slowing down.
Yeah, this is an extra, I'm just giving the extra one.
Do you want to write this on the-
We did.
Here you go, Dave. Thanks, good luck. Feel it. Alright, take it in.
You're welcome.
Feel it.
How you doing? How you doing? Shoulder getting better?
I thought Eastern Ave. was a good place to buy property.
Got some more vans here.
Trying to make one here.
You busted it. Did you get one of these, Max?
Next one. Oh, you know what, that didn't have a thing in it, maybe he emailed it. I'll ask Priscilla to make sure, it was supposed to have electronic copy, too.
Yeah, yep.
Where do they keep that?
And who was that, I didn't get the guy's name with David.
Larry Miller.
Larry Miller.
Pamela. Alright, so then we're going to look at one A and R for 23 South Mill River Road, and it's a separated 1.5 acres from the rest for applicant to purchase house from sibling. Hopefully, the rest will be in APR, the applications in. But the main thing, we just want to know is separation, so it's a bigger parcel and you're just separating out 1.5 acres?
Yeah.
And this is on what road?
South Mill River.
Right on South Mill.
It about Setrite and 116.
So right near the corner of Setrite, okay. Separate 1.5 acres, so a lot, so that's the 1.5. So we look at, so there's a frontage on South, South Mill, and that's a lot of frontage. Where is that?
Yeah.
Alright.
The, what do you call it, surveyor, she left enough frontage on all places, so-
Yeah, Setrite, all it looks like.
Setrite, 116, the rest of South Mill River Road.
Where's 116? Oh, oh wow. Alright, and this other, this-
Parcel's already here.
Yeah.
So it's just this one.
Yep.
Well, doesn't it have to be, yeah, yeah. So the house-
I don't know, usually that would be a solid line.
Small barn and garage is on the, on-
Pardon?
The house and the small barn and the garage are on there.
Yes.
And what was your name again?
Pam Fisk.
Pam Fisk, okay.
Pamela, yes.
So we have the application, it was stamped, check received. So we have the frontage, we have the size, the angles, a little bit funny, but nothing.
Yeah, and usually that's a solid line like this one here.
I know.
And then the rest of it's going to be given to, you're going to give it to some organization?
It's still going to be ours, but it's going to be in APR.
APR?
Yeah.
So will it actually be part of your property, then?
Well, it belongs to my brother, my sister, and I. That one and a half acres will be mine, but that, the rest of that will be my brother's, sister, and mine. So I don't know what, you know, ultimately, it'll go to a farmer if it goes into APR, you know?
So your three names will be on two different deeds?
No.
Yours will be on one deed, and then your name will be on the second deed?
Yes.
I'm just curious, because that would explain, that would explain perhaps why that's a dash line, because if the other two, if the other two parties, you know, die or something happens, then you automatically get the whole property.
No, but what the decision we're making is to make-
I know.
To make this a property, so it's actually should, it's a property, is what we're saying.
Okay, yeah.
Are you sure they're going to grow here?
No, I don't care. Alright, yeah, so that should be, that should be a solid line.
That's right, we know what it is.
I know, but will the next person expect it?
Yeah, alright, sure.
And see, this language, let's see. See, that's the language that we like, it says, does not qualify as business building lots. Any other questions?
I move to approve the A and R for Arnold Leonard Skolski, Sandra J. La Croix, and Pamela Fisk.
Thank you, if everybody-
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye, opposed, abstain? Four zero zero.
So what were the three names again? Pam Fisk. In your motion, you gave three names.
Arnold Leonard.
Arnold Leonard.
Yep. Sandra J. La Croix. La Croix, excuse me. Okay.
No, I was just going to wait for the whole stack.
These are signed by you guys? I'll just, my second.
Nice to see you, haven't seen you in a long time.
It has been a long time.
Yeah.
Alright, so you-
Yeah, we'll pass this down, we'll finish signing.
So I'm just thinking, there's only four, so we keep two and maybe two, or we'd like to keep three?
I have another one, if you need another one, I can-
Well, why don't we just give you the, you just need the Mylar, actually, and you have another one, alright, then we keep the three, because we, I think it's assessor, building, and planning board.
Okay.
Oh, this was wrapped up. I should have said at the beginning, this is four of us present, Max, Paul, Kippen, myself, and four out of seven is a quorum for the planning board, so get that, make sure the minutes have the four names on it. It was a little whiskey when I saw the one, Mary Ann, Marie said she couldn't make it, she had said yes a couple of days back, and that's when I thought, oh, good, we're going to have a quorum.
Yeah, if I just have the Mylar, Max, I'll just-
There you go.
Here you go, Pam.
Thanks.
Feel it, nice seeing you.
Nice seeing you.
Take care.
Yep.
Man, it's good, happy customers sometimes. Two for two, let's see if we can keep it up.
See, our only problem is that we don't know if it's a yes that makes them happy or a no that makes them happy.
Alright, so Chris, we've been told that there's some new information, some changes to the project, so we don't have the site plan in front of us for 198.
Sure, and so what I brought is sort of an informal set of plans, the original and new, that highlight some changes that may be significant in terms of the site plan that I wanted to step through. This very new business is ever-changing, and so I'll just talk a little bit about what led to a couple of these things, and then I just want to step you through what they are and determine, I know every town has different procedures for dealing with changes, so I hesitated to bring these ahead while we still had some unsettled business with the decision being filed, now that's all squared away, so I just wanted to make sure that we're approaching everything procedurally the right way. But basically, there have been sort of three sources of changes. One of them is, I guess I'd qualify it as market pressures, I don't want to get into the business details of my client too much, but I think that it's surprised everyone in the industry about how slow the state licensing process has been, and so they are looking at now, at the earliest, the winter probably, before they'll have a license from the state and have any chance of putting plants in the facility, and are looking at what that market may look like down the road, and so that's led to some phasing of the project, not just seeing it in this project, I have another project down in North Hampton that's been put on hold for at least a year, a cultivation project. There've also been some operational changes based on some lessons learned on other facilities that these folks are running in other states, that goes, a lot of changes internally that aren't really relevant to the site plan, but have also taken a look at just some operational things and some security things that we've made some improvements on, and then there've been some changes with thoughts toward resiliency. We have a certain amount of natural gas available, but with the moratorium, there's going to be propane use on the site, significant electricity which EverSource can provide, but these folks are looking at, well, what happens about that blizzard that happened, comes in the middle of January and cuts the power for a couple of days, and we can't get propane trucks in? So there've been some changes for additional fuel storage on site, so that's sort of the background. I'm going to hand this out, and I have some boards, shamefully, I forgot to bring my easel tonight, so.
The one up there work? Both time?
I'll be with that white cord with the shoulder.
Yeah, it's not big enough for the camera to catch anyway, probably.
So the first sheet here is again a stripped down version of the site plan as it was approved, the second page-
And could you just give a quick two-minute summary of what we're talking about for the viewing audience also?
Yes, so this is 198 Mill Village Road, which was until recently the home of Pioneer Gardens, which grew perennials in a large greenhouse on the existing site. That property has been purchased by Suns Mass Inc., which is, I'm sorry, the property's been purchased by Go Grizz, which is a real estate dedicated LLC, but to be operated by Suns Mass Inc., for all of those liability reasons why they create these LLCs, in order to use the site for marijuana cultivation. We're in the process, after an approved special permit and site plan review and stormwater permit, of constructing the site to ready it for cannabis cultivation. There is an application in to the State Cannabis Control Commission to allow cultivation at this site. It is cultivation only, there's no manufacture, no retail, which are the other types of marijuana licenses.
Thank you.
And so, oh, great. So there are a couple of places on the, on the site that I'd like to highlight. In our original proposal, there was, in addition to the existing greenhouse, which is being renovated on the interior, we had proposed a 33,000 square foot harvest and processing building, where we'd take the cut plants, dry them, and package them to be sent off to wherever they're going to be going. There was, there's an existing barn in this portion of the site that was used by Pioneer Gardens that originally was intended to remain. At the main entrance of the site, we had proposed a single 20-foot wide swinging gate with a guard booth to control access, of course, the perimeter of the entire site is secure to keep unauthorized folks out. Septic field was proposed here toward the center portion of the site, in a property 196 Mill Village Road that was also purchased by our client and merged into the site. There were provisions for some level of propane storage tanks, and then a parking lot with a total of 52 spaces plus additional overflow, and also access for operations within the site. And then there's just a summary of what I'm calling the hardscape areas, the roof and the paving, both of existing and new buildings, the greenhouse as well. And so, as we look at the new site, again, some of those triggers for the changes, the barns that are located in this portion of the site were evaluated and determined to not be adequate for the operations that were to be done in there, and so the proposal is to demolish those barns. Actually, they're not entirely going away, Yap and Arien are actually planning to take down one of the barns and move it to their new location and reuse it, so that won't be disposed of, which is a good thing. The elimination of that building lets us reorganize the site access a little bit, you know, consolidate the parking in a more efficient manner in that portion of the site, and then open up the center of the site for a little bit easier access getting around. Yap has told us that he'd get a 50-foot tractor trailer turned around in the middle of that site in the old condition, which I'm skeptical of, but we certainly want to make sure that truck access is easy and safe there. As Blake started traveling the nation, looking at other facilities and access control and security, it became apparent that there were some improvements that could be made to the access of the site. In particular, the goal here is to put the guard booth in between an entry lane and an exit lane. This creates a couple of advantages. So just quickly, the layout that we're showing here is a single 11-foot swinging gate, which would be the entry point into the facility for entering traffic. A guard booth on a central island, this layout allows us to have the guard in a position to talk to vehicles that are entering the site while remaining in the booth, and also having the fence between the guard booth and the entering vehicle. Then, that way, that communication can happen while the vehicle is still outside the facility, and also prevents the guard from having to exit the gate in order to have that conversation. And then, a 15-foot rolling gate on the exiting side, which is both for exiting traffic and also gives us a larger gate if there were a larger vehicle to travel in there. This then allows the guard to be able to communicate with the vehicle exiting more And then, down in this portion of the site, the footprint of the proposed building has been reduced by approximately half, it's about 16,000 square feet as proposed, and in addition, as I was discussing, there was a lot of talk about resiliency to the site, and once it became apparent that it was important to have a significant volume of propane on the site, the mechanical engineers started then playing around with different efficiencies that they could gain inside, knowing that there was a limited natural gas supply to the site, and efficiencies of scale led to it being advantageous to put a much larger supply of propane in the site. Then, that way, that communication can happen while the vehicle is still outside the facility, and also prevents the guard from having to exit the gate in order to have that conversation. And then, a 15-foot rolling gate on the exiting side, which is both for exiting traffic and also gives us a larger gate if there were a larger vehicle to travel in there. This then allows the guard to be able to communicate with the vehicle exiting more conveniently. And then, down in this portion of the site, the footprint of the proposed building has been reduced by approximately half. It's about 16,000 square feet as proposed. And in addition, as I was discussing, there was a lot of talk about resiliency to the site. And once it became apparent that it was important to have a significant volume of propane on the site, the mechanical engineers started then playing around with different efficiencies that they could gain inside, knowing that there was a limited natural gas supply to the site. And efficiencies of scale led to it being advantageous to put a much larger supply of propane in the site for those efficiencies. And I'll note there that there are some very detailed permit process that we're going through with that. It's a multi-step process. The first one is a land license that we need to apply through the select board, which also, the application itself, is signed by the fire chief, who we've been in communication with. And then, the select board reviews that permit through a public hearing. And after that's approved, there's a very detailed technical application, including a fire protection plan, that goes to the state fire marshal's office for review that looks at such things as the technical details of the tanks themselves. This is because the tanks are over 10,000 gallons, which is the threshold for large tanks. The technical details of the tank, the response ability of the fire department, the operation and maintenance plans for the site. And so those have been located in a spot that is convenient, both to the greenhouses, to the proposed building, also to the first phase of the greenhouse, which is to be built up in this area here. The goal, actually, it's not terribly relevant, but the goal is in the first phase of construction to make this section of the greenhouse fully operational to the point where a license can be granted by the state. And then, while the business is gearing up in that portion of the greenhouse to continue renovations throughout the rest of the interior. And this building, the processing building, not just reduced, but is also falling to a later phase of the construction.
Where was the original greenhouse that was being torn down?
The greenhouse being torn down?
Yeah, you had all the greenhouses there, and then you said you were tearing. If my memory serves right, you had one...
You mean originally?
On the original one, yeah.
So there's about 24 feet of greenhouse in this location.
Sticking out? Yeah, gotcha, okay.
That has already been demolished, and that was to meet the zoning setback.
Just as curiosity there.
Correct.
So that little strip there is off, okay, or would be on.
Right, and then, while that does rearrange the site to a fair degree, I do know that, you know, we talked extensively about some of the impervious area coverages, and so I did want to total up the differences there, which basically, we're removing a significant area of roof and then adding back some pavement to the point where on net, we're actually increasing the green space slightly from the original plan.
And so what will happen in your next phase with the service, impervious service?
Oh, that is the full build-out total.
Oh, so this is assuming that you put another building in over here again?
That assumes that this building gets constructed in a future phase, yes.
Oh, I see, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't understand that, okay, gotcha.
Right. So this plan reflects the final condition of the site. I was just noting that it is being phased in.
But the 16,000 square feet will come later in another phase?
Correct.
Okay, good, I was writing down notes here and I missed that.
Fair enough. And so, presenting these changes, just to understand to what extent, you know, if it's a full site plan package that needs to come in to be reviewed, or things that need to be, you know, there's anything from that to submit it for record. And so we're here to just clarify any of these changes. I didn't want to drop off plans unannounced and have everybody confused about what was going on. So we are here to ask what the appropriate next steps are in the opinion of the board.
Even though the processing building is basically cut in half, is that a retention or detention pond that's in front of it? I know it's not really a pond, but drainage area. It looks like that has been cut in half as well.
It is, I meant to highlight that too. So this infiltration basin, which was sized primarily for accepting the roof runoff of the original building, because we are utilizing the permeable pavement, so that essentially doesn't have runoff that we need to catch. So...
But not all of the pavement's going to be permeable, is it?
There was a need, right, and I also did not highlight that we've relocated the septic fields.
Right.
Of this side. So there was a segment of pavement that was impermeable in the original plan, but it was small enough that it ran off. It essentially runs off onto the permeable area, and we created enough of a reservoir with the soil section below the pavement that it doesn't need to be caught by a separate basin.
So where's the, since you moved the septic system, where's the septic tank going to be located? I see with the leach field is up there.
Yeah, and I simplified this a bit, but, so the office building here has a septic tank dedicated to this building. The new building would have its own dedicated septic tank. They're collected into a single pump chamber that pumps up to the fields. And that's all gone through the health permitting with the health inspector.
Just curious, at the boundaries, there's a little... Is this the north?
Yes, and it's north.
So that, it's a bigger parking lot up against that plot line over there. So where's the drainage, it's all coming? Again, just, so, I mean, I'm, thank you for bringing this. But again, I would think some of the stormwater management things look like they have changed, and so that's something we probably want to have looked at.
Yeah, and so, that's part of the question, is if an additional peer review is appropriate, we're certainly happy to go through that process and submit a package necessary to go to the engineer.
And then what's the propane storage tanks on? Is that pavement underneath it, or?
They will not be paved underneath, they'll have concrete saddles, which then are on footings that go down to frost. And so there'll be sort of a loose stone typically is what goes underneath that for housekeeping, just within the footprint of it.
So do you count that as hardscape area, or no?
I would not. If it were compacted gravel, like a driveway, I would, but this is loose stone. If I, you know, in the model, it would be a slightly different runoff number than grass, which we'll certainly submit to the peer reviewer, but the, given the sandy soils that we have there, the, I will say that changing that number in the model would not alter what we'd expect the runoff characteristics to be.
So I assume that these entrances here are where you get to the tank to fill them? This looks like a driveway that you get over there.
Yeah, that's a new driveway around there.
Correct.
And that's, how wide are those?
15 feet, I believe.
Okay, so the fire department, and everybody can get in easily?
Yeah, and we've been reviewing this plan back and forth with Chief Melnick.
So the larger tanks are a case that you get snowed in or something?
It's, it's, there was a bit of an iterative process. The initial trigger was thinking about, yeah, if we get snowed in and the power's out for a few days, in that event, the financial impact of losing a crop numbers in the millions of dollars. So they essentially want to be able to run this facility enough to keep the plants alive at, which they need something like 50% input over those couple of days when they're down. And so that led to, and I only know enough to be dangerous about mechanical systems, but they started rearranging some of the decisions that they've been making about heat and power in light of the fact that we have the limited natural gas supply, to start moving toward propane. Once we started moving toward that and realized that having that resilient supply on hand was important, that led to economies of scale in changing a little bit more of the equipment to propane. So the, essentially, the propane demand of the site has gone up significantly from what it was anticipated originally. There's a number of other mechanical changes that have gone on inside in terms of the different ways that they're delivering air and controlling some of the environmental factors.
So this is square over here, is that the generator?
Yes, yes, a backup generator. So that they can supply the heat directly with the gas, but then power the generator to then deliver electricity. Again, if they're down in January, now they need lights to power, to help the plants survive and in good shape.
Can you maybe tell me quicker than I can find, who was our peer review on this?
Weston and Sampson. I don't remember the gentleman's name who's here.
So, so I guess the question is, what do we need?
I guess I'm wondering, what's the timeframe between phase one and phase two? And what do you anticipate? I mean, years or months, or what?
I hesitate to be too committal, but the sense that I've gotten is 12 months, maybe 18 months behind phase one. But I say that with a little bit of uncertainty.
But the question to us is, do we want to have this, do we want to review this again? It's a different plan than what we reviewed and approved.
Right, we're proposing a final condition that's different, regardless of the phasing.
Yeah, it's not, I don't know, I don't know if I'd say substantially different or somewhat different, so do we just get, do we just get an update, or do we want a full new proposal?
With a public hearing, and do we need one or not?
Yeah, that's another thing that we might actually have to double-check with someone.
I don't think that we have to do the whole thing, but because of the coverage in the driveways and stuff, you know, there's no numbers here, so it's really hard to determine. I mean, the only thing that Chris has put down here is a net loss of $5,000.
And again, my intention was not to be detailed like that, to give the scope of the change.
I think if they just checked, submitted new calculations of everything and had somebody review it.
And then, just like I said, the slopes and stuff to make sure that it's, I mean, our big thing is keeping it on the property and make sure it's going to go where it's supposed to go.
Absolutely.
So that's why I think if we were able to keep our, the same peer reviewer, they knew the project, so just by updating and changing the numbers, they could do a quick check, so that wouldn't be too expensive. I mean, and things like lighting and traffic and all those things, that's not changing, right? I mean, lighting's actually, maybe you've got to show us where the lighting does.
More lighting in the parking lot.
Well, in the parking lot, but I don't think there's any neighbors over there either, maybe there are.
Yeah, so the types of lights that we're using are identical to what was submitted. The locations have changed. We're still respecting zero-foot candles at the property line, which is, you know, that's just the way that we design sites. But we can produce a new photometric plan if that's, if that would like to be reviewed. Again, I agree with you folks that it's sort of in a middle ground where it's not a super dramatic change, but it is somewhat significant, I'm saying the same thing, somewhat significant.
And then I think, you know, police is going to work with Blake there and that, so that's not, we're not concerned about that. The propane and all that, you have to get different permits for that. So we're not really concerned about that. It's really the stormwater management type thing. Septic, you have to make sure that's right. I kind of want to go back to see what our other issues were with this, you know, eight months ago, whatever it was, but...
Well, I think you can probably give that up to peer review, because they'll know what it was, and so...
Yeah, so I think if you could do a plan and put like the slopes on it and then do the new calculations.
Sure.
Then we...
Sure.
So then it becomes a, I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's a legal thing, whether we need to do another public hearing or not.
Well, I think you're going to have to have a public hearing on these tanks, aren't you?
There is a public hearing with the select board for the tanks, yes.
Yeah, I was going to say, because those are, I know that they did some others somewhere else in town here.
Yankee Candle submitted something recently.
When Walters did it, I think we had to do it.
Well, no, this was, I think this may have been the other outfit, but anyways.
Have you scheduled that? Do you know if that's scheduled?
We will be submitting that, hopefully in the next few days. We've been working with Somerset Engineering, who are experts on these large storage tanks. And they've finalized the exact layout of the equipment and have prepared some of the fire protection information.
Because if we have some time flexibility, then maybe we could do the same public hearing.
I share with them, have it all in one?
Do the updated stormwater and the propane at the same time. I don't know if that matters.
Yeah, that will probably work timeline-wise. So, yeah, certainly it would be beneficial for us if we could do it. I will say, we would gladly do that if the schedule works out.
Sure.
And the frontage, nothing changed there? The opening, the driveway's the same or similar?
Right, so we did widen the driveway at the security gate, but then necked it down. We're able to retain some of that hedge that exists along the driveway and are going to extend it to try to, again, lower the profile at the front entrance there. Blake doesn't want people to see him.
Yeah, it looks like the trees are pretty similar to what you had, but probably changed a little.
Okay.
And this was, we did the special permit.
So there's a special permit, there's a site plan review, and there's a stormwater permit.
So the special permit, we don't have to...
Yeah, I would argue that the special permit, we really haven't changed anything related to what the special permit is.
So it's really the stormwater site plan. You could just call it stormwater, probably. You want to go with that, Max? Do you have, regarding the site plan, do you have any comments?
You know, I'm just curious why you changed the fence line behind the house on the south side of the driveway?
Yeah, so...
You created more of a choke point in the corner of the office?
We do, but this...
Tighter radius for your tractor-trailer?
We do, but this, you know, this was actually a comment that came straight from their operations people, that they wanted more space in the interior of the site to be getting equipment around. And we're not so concerned with that one turning point.
What's this long rectangular box on the back of that property there, within the pavement, I guess?
That's the existing hedge that, even in the original plan, there's some hedge there that's to be removed, and then we're replacing it with a hedge on the outside of the fence line behind the 196 property.
Okay, this, okay, I see, this now becomes this L-shaped?
And it continues.
Yeah, okay, alright.
Yep.
And you own both the houses out front?
Yes, and those were purchased and then they're merged through the A and R that you folks endorsed a couple of months ago.
So they're no longer houses?
Right, so they cannot be residences.
Part of the commercial property.
Yeah, it's undecided exactly what will be done with them still.
And just refresh me, the gate that's up here in the center top of your drawing?
Yes.
Those are just for emergencies?
That is, right, that is a padlocked gate. Sun's Mass also purchased that agricultural field, and that gate is the only way to get to it without crossing a wetland. So having access at that point is important.
So that's for, that's basically in and out to the...
Correct. In reality, that gate will rarely be used. That field is being leased back to Pioneer Gardens, who accesses it from... So Pioneer Gardens actually has an easement through what used to be Arien's house, right along the property line, and then has an easement across that little triangle. I should probably point at this and not... across that little triangular, I should probably point at this and not, so Pioneer Gardens is allowed to access through this property and then to cross this little triangular property to the field, but they have a 99-year lease to here, and then they are also leasing this field. So they will access that field in that direction, but as the property owner, it's important that Sun's Mass.
You have your own access.
To get to it.
But that, the parcel that you're just describing, doesn't that have frontage on Child's Cross Road anyways?
I think there's one more parcel up on Child's Cross, I think.
What do you feel so?
Yeah, I think this property is, I wish I had a larger map, but I, this property is not on Child's Cross, because I think there are two houses here.
Correct, there are.
Yeah.
But I thought the one.
The field, they do, but there's a wetland that would need to be crossed to access it from Child's Cross Road.
Okay.
All right, so, so when do you think you'll have new, something for a peer review to look at?
I am gonna shoot for the end of this week, but the latest sometime next week, I would, I would expect it.
Would anybody on this committee like to contact Weston and Sampson and ask them if they could do a peer review follow-up for us? Like, we should have that records, Priscilla should have the records of what they submitted to us and whose names is on it and stuff, so.
I will.
Could you do that, that's hopefully just, easier if you do it, then Priscilla will get the information from her. So I don't know, do we need a note on this, or just a?
Well, I'm just wondering, too, when do you plan to have the, the meeting, the public meeting on the, on the tanks?
Well, there's an advertising requirement for that, so it'll be, it'll be up to them, how quickly that gets on the agenda, I guess. We expect to submit the application this week.
Okay. Can I just, before we make our final decision, can I ask, Dick, I also have a note that you may also engage with the board on some possible zoning updates, is that relevant to this?
No, not to this, but relevant to this.
Okay.
That was just a note, I added to the email that got swept into the agenda.
Yes, well, I wanted to be clear, otherwise we forget things.
So are you thinking of bringing the information back to us at our next meeting, or?
If I can, I can either bring it directly to the meeting or submit it ahead of time through the building office, whatever's most appropriate, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, at this point, you could just work with the.
I guess we prefer to, let me, let me, let me amend that statement, we'd love to submit it outside of the meeting and, if possible, have it forwarded to the peer reviewer.
Yeah, I think that's fine, and then, then we schedule a public hearing, whether it's the same one or a different one, and then we have all the information at the public hearing.
Okay.
And we'd have to phrase the, you know, public hearing in a way that says this is an update and it's being reviewed or something, but, yeah.
So I don't know that we have to vote anything, I mean, I don't think so, I think we just take care of it when the peer review comes in and all that.
Yeah.
That sounds funny, I, I agree, I don't think we need to vote on anything.
So, but, well, I guess, we should vote that we do, we do wanna have a public hearing when the new information is available.
I just wanna put some minutes in here saying that, that we will tag along with the.
And if we can, if we, if it does fit with the other, we can do it.
Okay, all right, so.
So I move that we have a public hearing on the new information regarding the stormwater.
See, we don't have a date certain for it, so that's why I'm wondering if we, how do we do the vote without the date certain for it meeting?
Yeah, but what if we wanna schedule that, schedule that date before our next meeting?
Yeah, what's our timeframe for notification and so forth? You said there was a special one for the tanks or something?
Right.
Two weeks usually.
It's usually, usually 14 days, and then they need a little bit of time ahead of that to.
I mean, it's no different than, you're saying it's no different than a regular public hearing. You sounded like it was something different and more extensive, so that's why I asked the question.
I guess I was referring to the permit being, and it's really the state fire marshal permit that's, that's extensive, the, the submission to the select board is actually pretty simple, but there is a public hearing for that.
So let's make our date, either the select board, or we'll schedule another one. Either the select board when they talk about, when they have the public hearing for the propane, or we schedule another one.
So what's your motion gonna be, John?
That we, we wanna hold a, we wanna schedule a public hearing to review revised stormwater plans.
So you moved to schedule.
198 Mill Village Road Project.
To schedule public.
Public.
Public meeting, yeah, oh, public meeting. For propane storage.
Public hearing, but not public, public.
Public hearing, okay. And so that would be TBA then?
Yeah.
Okay, let me just read that back. John makes a motion to schedule a public hearing to coincide with select board public hearing for the propane storage.
But our public hearing, vote to have a public hearing on a revised stormwater plan.
Oh, and also on the storm.
Well, no, we, our public hearing is for this revised stormwater plan.
Oh, I see, okay.
So vote to have a public hearing for a revised stormwater plan.
For revised.
To coincide with the select board.
Revised stormwater only, is that right?
Yeah, is there anything else on the site plan we need to?
Okay, all right, so that's good, so site water to, to coincide, okay. So move, move to schedule a public hearing for the reduced, for the revised stormwater to coincide with the select board public hearing for the propane storage, date to be, date and time to be announced.
I'll second the move.
Okay, Kip seconds.
And we should put 198 Mill Village Road Project in.
Yeah, I've got that up here, yeah, yeah. I think I got it back on the other side of the page here, beginning, yeah, 198 Mill Village Road, okay. Date and time to BBA. Okay, so we got it moved by John Waite and seconded by Kip Camosa.
Any discussion?
None.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, vote?
Oh, you abstaining or opposed?
Opposing.
Okay, and that's because of?
Scheduling a site plan, a site, as a public hearing?
I've opposed everything about this project. Just keep consistent.
Okay.
Not voting the affirmative for this.
Three, one, zero.
Is that still, is that still passed, I guess?
So, Max, Max opposed, okay. Three, zero, one. Three, one, zero, I'm sorry, what, three, one, zero. Okay.
All right, so, so we'll follow up with the peer reviewer and then, and then you can get those things and let's just keep us up to date on the, or keep our office up to date on any kind of progress with the propane.
So now, there's no, there's no files of extensions or anything, we're just, everything's going along until we get.
Yeah, I mean, this is a new, this is kind of a new.
Okay, all right.
Just, just so you know, once I make the contact, I'll have Priscilla contact you and let you know that you're free to work with them or ask for their information for them.
And then the bill will come to.
Absolutely.
And are there any, are there any fees?
I will pass it on very quickly.
Are there any fees to the town, John? No?
Oh, well, public hearing is the mailing and everything, but they wouldn't pay for that, the applicant will say.
Okay, all right, good, okay. All right.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
So you do have something else?
I do.
All right.
This project, well, Sun's Mass.
Just make sure the mic's near close enough to the mic, in case.
So the client, the applicant, Sun's Mass Inc., would like to be able to use this, some space within the building at 198 for the, to make edibles and other products, cannabis products. What is technically referred to in the regulations and the statute is product manufacture. They'll particularly like that word, because it conjures up images of factories and smokestacks and, and a product manufacturing facility is basically a commercial kitchen. They'd like to be able to install a commercial kitchen within the existing building. Now, the existing zoning doesn't allow product manufacture, only cultivation. So they've asked me to pursue the possibility of a zoning change to allow that. A zoning change, I don't know if you've been through this before, but, you know, as I understand it, it's submitted to the, a suggested change is submitted to the board of selectmen, and then they have a couple of weeks and they remit, they submit it to you or remit it to you, and then you hold a public hearing, and then you decide whether or not you recommend or don't recommend a proposed change. I don't think you have the right to change it, I think it's just you take it or leave it. And then that goes to town meeting, where it needs to pass by a two-thirds vote. So I see two possible approaches here. Obviously, it's gonna be up to us to, to generate sufficient support within the town for the, for the measure, and that's not what I want to talk about today, I'm, I'm really more concerned about the best procedure. So, I've got two approaches in mind, and I'm here to, just to reveal what they are and get your thoughts, your informal thoughts on, on them. Plan A would be for me to develop, to draft some language that would tweak the existing zoning law to make that change, probably do it in a few sentences, and submit that to the board of selectmen and go through the same process. Option B would be to submit a much broader revision of the zoning laws. Now, as I mentioned last time I was here, I know there's been talk among the board and the selectmen about taking another look at the zoning laws, because they are pretty complicated and long, and, and I'd be perfectly willing to, to, to submit for your consideration and to draft a, you know, a new set of bylaws, and I think I could simplify them enormously without making any substantive changes, just, just simplify them. And so, I could do that, I could submit a more comprehensive change to the selectmen and then follow the same procedure, perhaps even both. So just thoughts from you as to which procedure would you welcome, a broader change, and if, if we talked about a broader change, Plan B, then I'd be happy to work with any member of the planning board, you know, we wouldn't have to go through a formal hearing process like tonight, I could speak to you outside of this, of this meeting and develop a plan that, that would appear to be consistent with the, with the, with the concerns of the board, and, and then submit it to the selectmen and take it from there. So I'm wondering if you guys have any thoughts as to which of those two approaches would be better?
Well, we, we started some discussion at last month's meeting, and we might potentially talk a little more about it tonight, although I think we're gonna do other projects.
Well, I, I don't wanna get into too much, but I did, I did reach out to a couple of attorneys about that, and I did try to get in touch with you about it, but we can talk about that later. I guess, you know, anything that you wanted to do, if you wanted to write anything or give us any input, it's something that, you know, we can look at. How, how we act on it, I don't really know, but, you know, I think whatever information that we get, if we end up working with another attorney, you know, we can always forward it on and say, this is what we've got, these are some suggestions that we've got, you know, and we, we would talk and see how we wanna shape it and, you know, and we've, we've talked about it, because we do wanna, you know, change this a little bit, but how, how that will happen, I don't really know, so.
Would you be open to a Plan B approach?
Well, I mean, just, we're always open, I guess, but one of the, you know, be in the direction that we're heading, and one thing, we, my notes from last time said we wanna merge the medical and recreational, for example, because right now it's two, and it is confusing, so that would be something that's sort of administrative, and you could probably have, help us with that, actually.
Sure.
But the other thing we said at the last meeting is should we put a moratorium on the whole thing until we, until we do make revisions? I don't know if you're in favor of that.
I don't see any reason to do that.
And then we talked about, yeah, making sure that we get a law firm who's got the most up-to-date, you know, stuff, now that it's been around a little bit. The other thing was, you know, I know, one of the things we wanna talk about is the use of APR and other agricultural land for it, so.
I, I'm aware of how the board feels about that.
Yeah, and, you know, that is something we learned through this project, is that how do you count property?
And part of the concern was that, that you moved, put up some new greenhouses, and then all of a sudden, somebody else comes in and says wants, wants to do something in those, and they move on, and, you know, that somehow, weren't we trying to control that? That was, that was part of our, our concern.
Sorry, say it again, Paul.
Well, I, I think that maybe, maybe Max can tell you, 'cause he was the one that kinda, didn't you bring it up, Max?
I think Kip was talking about it.
Yeah, I mean.
Moon mass and sun mass, and you use the ag loophole to build, you know, processing.
See, like, what, what happened with this situation, and this is just my point of view, I can't really speak for the boards, is that this was such a, a new endeavor for not only this community, but for the state, and, you know, a lot of the leaders in town felt pressure to, you know, get in, get their foot in the door, and I, the process, I don't believe was well thought out. But we did have some bylaws, and like them or not, we followed the rules that were in front of us. But some of the people that were very pro this project have now come back and said, look, this is what we've created right here, what we protect all the land for in Deerfield. So now we need to really see that this doesn't happen again.
Oh, you made the APR thing.
Well, not just the APR thing, we, you know, we had an agric, a large agricultural, you know, business here, that was, because of our bylaws, converted to very much a commercial use, and the, the folks that sold this moved right down the road, and now they're putting up another large thing.
Another thing, and that, that didn't go.
And Moon Mass could come in tomorrow and buy that place for $2 million, and we could have the exact same thing, and they could go to another part down there, and then, you see, and this is what we're trying to figure out, how do we prevent this? And that, that we're saying we're anti-marijuana, it's just, what this is all about more, from, I think for the majority of the people, is to keep Deerfield rural and not have this type of an operation spring up here, here, or here. Because the same, this, this could happen on Grave Street, you know, it could happen right on North Main Street.
Well, if it's zone commercial, I suppose it could happen.
No, it doesn't have to be commercial.
Yeah, it does have to be commercial, because it's not ag.
This was not zone commercial, it never was commercial.
It was, it was a commercial operation, but it enjoyed the, the agricultural exemption under Section 3.
But that's what I'm saying.
I mean, there's really not that much difference in growing perennials and growing marijuana, you know, they're both forms of agriculture.
Oh, no, there's, there's, there's no technical difference, but there's a big difference.
Yeah, I, I mean, but it, it changes a lot, I mean, you know, around the greenhouses, you don't see the security, you don't see all the pavement, it, it's, it's a different environment altogether, and, and I think that that's what we're trying to have a better control of, I don't know if control is a proper word, but just to make sure that it doesn't happen in somebody else's backyard.
So the other quick point I just make is that, through all those public hearings, it was very much that we were gonna allow cultivation of marijuana in residential ag, because we did want farmers to be able to take advantage of it, if they were able to. And we did not allow manufacturing, or whatever word you wanna call, the processing, and, and I think that was really clear, and I, I can't imagine that has changed all that much in town, so I just put that out there. So if, if part of what you want is, is to allow it, we restricted to where the manufacturing and the distribution of it can be, and, yeah, and, and cultivation was really all, all we ever thought of in, in residential ag. So, just to, you, you were at a lot of those meetings, too, you heard the same thing, so. So, you got a two-thirds vote at town meeting to change that, I don't see it happening, but, you know.
Well, frankly, I think, I, I don't, this is not the time or place to make the argument about
No. All I'm doing is put it out there and so, just to, you know, you have to think through your process if you really want to go through with it and it takes time and energy and stuff, so, um, so that, that's what I have to say. So I don't know if you want to help us with this other
Well, if you
Cleaning up our bylaws, but we're not going to, it's not going to help you get that one into it. I just put that out there, I guess.
Well, maybe there'd be no point in my even working with you.
Well, that's
If you're saying
That's why I'm saying, we're kind of inviting you to work with us, but I don't want to be dishonest here and say that, you know, it's going to help your cause because I think, I mean, you guys correct me if I'm wrong, but
No, I, I
Cultivation was, is, is, I think, and already, you know, there's a lot of people against even that, so. And now, you know, we've got one that's cultivation, well, we've got two cultivation and then one processing and one dispensary and, you know, I think a lot of people want to see how that goes.
Two cultivation, one
One processing?
One, you mean manufacturing?
Manufacturing, yeah, sorry. And one dispenser.
And one retail.
Retail.
It's not medical, it's
Right, so that's why we got to get the wording there, so retail.
Yeah. Well, um, I'll
You know, I'm speaking for myself, but I just, you know, I've heard a lot of, I've been through a lot of this, so.
Yeah. Okay. So, uh, you know, it sounds to me like you're saying you're not really interested in my working on a broader revision.
I, I think what I'm saying is we're not interested in that zoning change to put manufacturing in residential agriculture.
Or, or more specifically to allow, you know, commercial kitchen at this site.
Commercial kitchens, I think people aren't against.
That's what we're talking about.
I work with one, right, but what they, what they cook, what they cook in that kitchen is a big difference.
Yeah, I mean, you're making tomato sauce.
So a commercial kitchen with tomato sauce you'd allow?
What's that?
A, a commercial kitchen that makes tomato sauce would be
With or without marijuana in it?
Well, no. No, I mean
Well, those are the laws of the state. That's not our determination.
And then that wouldn't, even if, if we allowed, if, well, commercial kitchens are allowed in this town, just not in residential agricultural areas.
True.
And that's, that's the difference.
Well, probably with a special permit, it is.
What's that?
Maybe with a special permit, it is. I don't know.
I don't know, but that's not
I know, that's not what I'm talking about. Yeah, I mean, those laws go to, that's the state that called, that says where cannabis is and when it isn't. So it's not, we're not talking about a commercial kitchen.
We're talking local zoning here.
Right, and in this case, the zoning would be for marijuana manufacturing, not, not a commercial kitchen.
Well
You can call it what you want, but I'm just saying.
I'm describing it as a commercial kitchen.
Not a commercial kitchen.
Well, okay. Thanks for your time.
Sure.
Not sure what we're going to do, but I'll keep you informed.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep, thanks. So then we were going to go on to old business, continue discussion about potential bylaw changes. We're missing three of our members. Thanks. So you're working with the, with the police department and everybody, right? So I was right in saying we don't have to worry about that aspect of it.
Yeah, I'm not, yeah. I tried to get old John today, but I'll have to see him next week.
All right.
Feel her.
Do you want to have a quick?
Yeah, let's talk about that if you don't mind. I did reach out to a couple of attorneys and I ended up speaking and I thought it was appropriate. I spoke to Lisa Mead. She was the head of their firm. And basically talked with her about having Adam, you know, work with us on this. And she said that Kate Federoff, who's in their, her office, has been really going to a lot of the state meetings and take, you know, doing a lot of research on this. And she feels that Kate is now more qualified than Adam to deal with all of the marijuana things, you know, pros and cons and stuff like that. So if we wanted some assistance that, you know, Kate would be the one to, to go to.
That's Kate Mead?
No, Kate Federoff.
Federoff?
But that's the same law firm.
Same law firm. You know, and I just, for a lot of reasons, and I, I have no problems working with, you know, other attorneys, you know, maybe like Mr. Evans, who are in that. But I, I just think if they're working on something in town, it probably wouldn't be the most appropriate avenue to go down.
Yeah. Yeah, they could be consulted or they could add, they could give input, but, but it's not someone we want to hire, right?
No, I, I always like information because sometimes you can learn things from that, you know, whether they're good or bad, you know? But I, I think as far as that goes, I mean, maybe when we have a full board that we could talk into, you know, a little more detail about it and then get some of our ideas and we could call Kate in. I do know that, geez, I think, I don't think it's, it might be once a month. For some reason, I don't think it is. But anyways, the attorney, the town attorney spends a day or an afternoon in town hall anyways. So if we could have Kate come on that time, you know, maybe not all of us, but maybe we could schedule an earlier meeting and sit down and run some of our questions by her and stuff like that.
Yeah.
And we wouldn't, we didn't pay for it, you know?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Because when we have attorneys come, it costs the town a lot of money because we're basically paying them for five or six hours' travel. And if it's late enough, we pay for a hotel room as well, so.
So why are we hiring people that are two hours away?
Well, I, you know, I tend to agree with that, Max, that we should hire somebody local. I think in, in this particular case, you know, I don't, I can't say I don't, no. Some of the other attorneys that I sought out who are local, I just think that they're maybe a little too involved in, in the promotion of the marijuana thing. And I, I just wanted more of an equal balance. Somebody who not only is up on all the marijuana laws, but will look at it from a municipality perspective, you know, as to, you know, what the procedure is. Because a lot of times, you know, you get an attorney, and we've had several of them here, and they're all talking, they're, they're skewing it their way, you know what I'm saying? And that, we don't really know. And yet, when we talk with an outside lawyer, I say, well, yeah, all right, that's true, but this is how it really is. You know, and I'm just a little wary about it.
I just put a note, I, I'll call the Franklin Regional Council of Governments because I know they've been going a lot of these, they should continue to follow up on this. And so, if we have that meeting, maybe someone from there could come for an hour or two and, you know, and add some stuff that we haven't, obviously we haven't thought of. So, maybe a couple of people that's been following this for the past year would be really helpful.
I think, I, I mean, I think from my point of view, I, I think when we look at this, some of the things that we need to look at is, you know, like you said, adding that APR land to get that out of the zoning and stuff like that, and how big these operations really are. I mean, if you look, look at these changes, yes, their processing building is smaller, but yet all the blacktop is quite a bit more and with all these fences, I mean, this really is, it's a factory, you know? And it's far, a long ways from agriculture. And, you know, yeah, they bought these houses, but there are still other people here, here, and here, and
Yeah, and these, these propane tanks are, are a big hazard, so there'll be some concerns there.
I know when I was on the select board, we, there was quite a bit of issues with another propane storage in town that wasn't this large, so.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
But
For some reason, I got a, I got a, a notice of it because I'm, even where I'm at, it was somehow close enough to where they were putting it up. Was it, was it a Yankee or something? Where was that? Where was that big storage going to be?
Right at, right at the corner of Mill Village and Isn't it George? Not George.
Well, George's propane is there, back up from there.
Are you thinking Waltz?
Waltz. Was it Waltz?
That's right, I thought.
Yeah, yeah, Waltz, yeah. Yeah, Waltz's propane, yeah.
That was for a lot of storage of propane.
Yeah, but that's not the, this one here, this one here was back towards the center of South Deerfield somewhere.
The way, the way it worked with the Waltz situation was that he has no large tanks like this at all, but he has a lot of cylinders, so they collectively, and even the majority of his cylinders were empty because they're new tanks, but the way the rules are, you still have to count that. They have to count the truck, you know, every, everything has to be counted. So I guess
Do you know of some lawyers that you think might be local?
I just, I just, you know, it doesn't make any, I guess only that expertise exists inside 128. I'm very, you know?
I, I, I don't, I, I mean
Just the way the state operates is, is, you know, is the world revolves around 128. That's, it's a fact of life.
I mean, if you could do, if you could find someone, we would definitely
Yeah, I just would know why.
Sometimes it's a matter of someone looking. If you found somebody that was to your liking, that was
Well, it's not so much to my liking, it's somebody that's doing the work.
Exactly.
Yeah, I know, um, I, I tried to get the town to hire local lawyers, especially do a lot of real estate transactions. I know there's a lot of people and it didn't, they didn't want to, it didn't get to go very far, so we have the same law firm.
I mean, there's Springfield is quite close.
Oh, yeah. Well, there's some good attorneys in Amherst as well, too.
Yeah.
So you'll look around or are you bolder?
I don't really know lawyers that well, but it just seems odd that we're the other end of this, aren't they like on the Newbury?
Newbury, yeah, they are. You're right, and they are.
They can't get much further away from us than
No, but well, right now, we're talking, partly this gets back to town staff and who's going to do the research on it.
Right, but I mean, who chooses these people though, the select board?
Yeah. I think these, and these have been around for a while, and Lisa Mead's been an attorney for a while.
And it is true, I mean, one of the things, there are a lot of lawyers around, but few law firms really specialize in municipal law. And that's one of the things, there is a firm, I think it's called KP Law, and they have an office in North Hampton. The, the select board in the past has thought that this firm is so large that you don't really get the personalized service. You know, we do get reasonably good service. I say it like that because there have been times where we've waited a long time to get stuff, but, you know, I don't know, it's just
Just, just for my benefit, what does, how does, um, the other, the other guy that's a town law, is he part of Lisa Mead's firm too?
Adam Costa.
Adam Costa?
Yes, he is.
He's part of that firm too?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so that's some movement, so we'll follow up with that on the marijuana bylaws. What about solar electric?
I, I think that we should just talk about the solar electric, is to, you know, land coverage and forget about how much power it is. Does that seem to make sense?
So who do we get, do we need anybody to help us write that one up? I mean, we kind of all agreed on that.
I think if we look at it, I don't, I think we can make it as simple as, you know, I don't know what, I don't, off the top of my head, it's saying, you know, we pick a number. If you're going to cover five acres, it's a large. If it's going to be more than 10 acres or more than five acres, you know, it's extra-large and
And let me kind of run through my mind the residential part of it. I think we just put an upper limit to it and say that's it, everything lives right.
I don't think we, I don't think there's any restriction or even if there necessarily should be for residential.
Well, I'm just thinking of something coming in and putting in
10 kilowatts or less is res, there's no, you can just do it. But now we're saying we need to go higher than that and so, we need to adjust that also.
Yeah, I was thinking about it and I think 10 kilowatts is probably, I mean, I know, I'm the high
Well, it gets back to, we got a new size versus
Right, but I'm saying residential is a whole different ball of wax from the other. And, and I'm a pretty high user of it and 10 kilowatts would probably cover everything that I do with it. But I'm a high usage of it. And so, anything above that would really be high usage.
Right, all I'm saying, we need to have a minimum
10 kilowatts is not a whole lot.
Yeah.
For residential?
Yeah.
It depends what you do. But anyway, we just have to pick up a number where we say below that is
We can always change it later, but I'd say right now to, I just to prevent somebody from coming in and having, you know, having a big commercial thing in their yard. You know what I mean? Just because it's residential.
I mean, here again, I don't really know, but I think, I think Kevin's, Kevin's is 28,000, 28 kilowatts and it's just on his garage roof.
Right, see, sometimes that's all.
This, is that for, used for farming? I mean, what's the
No, he uses it for his house. It's, it's more than he actually needed, but he had a garage where he's going to have a welder. He's got welders and stuff like that in the house and the air, you know, everything. So it takes, to take care of everything, but it's
I guess I don't have a, I don't have a thing with saying the guy's a limit, but I just, I just didn't think that, you know?
I don't know, I don't know if we should actually put a number as far as the power. I'll put just the area that it can take up.
That's, that's what we're talking about with ground stuff, so why not?
Okay, all right.
And then whether we have a separate one, if it's on the ground versus on a roof, maybe that's actually the issue.
But why would you limit rooftop?
That's what I'm saying, make it like, if it's on a roof, we don't even care.
If it's on the roof, we don't care.
If it's on the ground, then maybe only so many square feet.
Right, right.
Ground
Just because that starts, and you can still do it, but you have to come and get a special permit of a public hearing just so your neighbors, just so your neighbors know about it, kind of thing.
I was just talking to somebody the other day about, he says, well, can you put the, can you put a tracker up on the roof? And I says, whoa, that's, that's a major.
That becomes really not cost effective, but anyway.
I don't know if that's really practical, but
You know, just, I always think of these things in the large things and I think that as long as there's a way for people to do that, because if you have a situation, you know, where, say my house, there's a commercial lot next to it and the guy puts in a solar field and yet I want to put in a larger mine, obviously I can't. I think there should be a process for it.
Well, it's through the special permit, yeah, 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 we're not
So not limited
You're, you're saying if your roof meets your needs for your power, they're just saying
Yeah, I think a lot of this, we're going to leave as a special permit, but just to give it some, some guidelines about it. Right now, it's, um, yeah, even right now, everything's large and extra-large, well, large is a lot of special permits. Yeah, there's no notes.
Right.
And that, and that just has, that, the new, the new bylaw would just be the, the surface that it covers.
Square feet or acres, yeah.
So then if, if, if the residential became so large that it covered, you know, into the larger areas, is that, does that mean they move into that category? Residential, I mean, if they, if they move into the larger scale
Yeah, and that's, right, because right now, we're saying, if it's under 10, you don't even have to worry. If it's over 10, between 10 and 2 megawatts, you gotta, you gotta do a special permit. So maybe we just move that to, again, some, some other
We'll figure out, we'll figure out on the area.
So again, that's why we all got to read 3800, because there's a lot of 3800s, fine, but some of it is not, so. And then you got to look in the definitions. That's the other thing, is we should also, the definition, didn't we decide that it should be right in the place itself instead of having to go flip-flop around?
I don't think that it's really bad to have one area of our zoning bylaw have all definitions and no matter what section you're in, you can always go back to that. But I think a lot of times that
But put some footnote, put some footnotes in there saying where the definitions are if you don't have them.
Yeah, I mean, it wouldn't hurt to say, because here, large means ground-mounted solar system generating capacity more than 10, more than 10 kilowatts, less than two. You can easily just put that right here so people will be clear.
That's considered large, more than 10?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. We want to up that a little bit.
Oh, yeah. Because I was going to say, I only have 18 panels and mine puts out seven.
But do we up it, if we want to get away from kilowatts, we got to come up with some square footage. And it does say ground-mounted, so roof-mounted doesn't even go into this bylaw. So I think roof-mounted must just be okay by rights.
Well, I've seen, I've seen people that have two trackers side by side and that would give you 16. You know, 16 or to 18, probably closer to 18.
Is it? You know, and here's another
Might be different, sorry, Center Village versus, you know,
Well
You know, Center Village
That's what I was going to say.
Big one versus if you have 10-acre property out in residential.
Exactly, if you have an area, you know, where, you know, you have houses and neighbors right there and then you're putting these things, you have trackers that are, you know, 20 feet from somebody else's house versus put them in, in, say, in my backyard where nobody can see it anyways. So I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's where you come in with a special permit and then the argument
On the percentage of your lot, maybe, percentage of lot size.
Well, they came, they, when they put mine in, they had to go get a, get a permit and they had to set it back 10 feet from, from the, from the property line, you know, like a structure, you know, because it is a structure.
Yeah. But I, but I'm saying, I can, I can see where a neighbor would be upset if, you know, there was two of those trackers in his backyard, and he never saw them before, and now he's, you know, I don't know. So I, I, I think that's why the special permit is a good idea, because then everything's on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah.
You know, if you, if you got an issue...
So are you saying the break-off would be ten kilowatts?
I'm not really saying with the break-off, cause I think it's, I think we should make it a square footage thing.
So, see if you can measure yours, too, we talked about this last time, see if you, bring in the square footage next time, I'll do the same with mine, mine's six point six kilowatts.
Okay. How many panels do you have?
I think it's twenty, so, yeah, so you can tell if they're...
You have twenty-four panels, but they're, they're high output panels, they're, they're higher than the...
Right, and you don't care about the output, you care about the size.
Right.
Oh, I care about the output.
No, you do, with zoning.
I know.
I know, I know.
Yeah, okay, all right, I'll, I'll measure, I'll measure them up.
All right, that's good, and then, and then just, what's a plan?
I took a picture also of another thing over at Whately that's thirty panels, and it sits up on the ground, and I took a picture with my phone, uh, and, and it's, um...
So you can measure that by knowing the size of the panels?
Three by ten, I can just go down there with a tape measure and measure it, and they haven't sold, they're selling the house, so...
So I think this, we have on this thing that we also wanna talk about lot size and shape restrictions, do we, or is that, is that, who, who brought that up?
I don't know.
Um, that was in reference to the creative geometry that was done in Mill Village Road to allow, you know, with that...
They, oh, now it's down, and then it opens up again.
Narrowed down, and to me, when it went, when it, when it came to the minimum lots, uh, lot width, to me, the measurement terminated there. But other people believe that it, it started again where it was more than eight, you know, more than a hundred feet.
So, can you, um, go to that section of the bylaw and, and come back with a, how, how we could improve it? Cause I, I forget where it is and everything, but...
Yeah.
Yeah, if you did that for next meeting, that'd be great.
But it's, and then also, you know, it's a wetland there as well, and we should address that you can't use wetlands for calculations in lot size.
Well, you'd have to use it for some lot size, but not for, you're saying for, for, um, permeable for...
Permeable for commercial, because if it's wetlands, it's permeability is different.
Well, that's the whole thing with this marijuana thing, is it's not really commercial, but it is.
But it's, it's an...
It's a limbo between commercial and agricultural.
And then accessory apartment, I think we need some, we need some help on that, but we do have to move on that, because it's so outdated, I think.
I mean, I know John didn't like, not you, but John Bronson, I, I just think it's so simple, just to make duplexes allowable.
Twoplexes, yes.
I know, it's, uh...
And don't worry about if it's for in-laws or not, I mean, it's like...
You know, and that, because it, I understand it, but, I mean, there's a whole section of Deerfield where you can build duplexes. It's just on the outside that you can't, and if you made it so you could do it everywhere, then it would just make, make things easy for everybody. You wouldn't have to have all these bylaws, and be worrying that, "Well, this guy's, you know, mom used to live there, but doesn't now, his niece lives there, so it's still family," but is, is it really an apartment, you know?
And I think for sustainable development, it's a good thing.
It is, it really is.
And so it, it actually helps in a lot of areas, and it'd be interesting in a public hearing, I'm sure people will have something to say about it, but it'd be good to hear what that is, so... All right, and I think, um, does anybody know what the status of our town building inspector and assistant to the admin and anything? I haven't caught, I haven't talked to Diane in a while.
We do have a, a full-time building inspector now, well, I shouldn't say that, we have a, a building inspector, other than...
Other than Dick.
Other than Dick, and, uh, he's not here full-time yet, but he's going to be, I think, um, Robert, my name's Paul. Robert, I can't think of his last name, but, um, anyways, um, yeah, so he's here quite a bit. I haven't heard anything about, uh, an assistant, other than Priscilla. I don't really know if the board has been entertaining that or not, but...
So let me catch up on that, cause I'd like, those, those people should be part of this discussion, you know?
And, and like I said before, I, we statutorily have the right to have our own staff. You know, it might be a little bit of a, a push and shove, but, you know, we can go to the finance committee, cause I, I know for at least the last five or six years, this board has been extremely frugal, I don't think the board has ever been more than five hundred dollars, even a couple...
Ten thousand, and we cut it back twice.
Cut to one, eh?
Yeah, so, I, I mean, if, we can't seem to get help from, uh, the selectman's office to get us, you know, assistance, we can do it on our own.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
It just, it would be smarter if it could be in the town, but if it's not, it doesn't look like it's happening, and so...
All right, that's, I'll follow up with Diane, too, but that'd be great if, because the, a previous building inspector did put out something about accessory apartments, I think it was some stuff that we talked about, and they brought, so we can go back and pick up on that, instead of starting from scratch.
Well, we do have that, we do have that housing production plan that talks about it, too.
This thing came out, this thing came, like, out of that, after that a little bit.
Yes, yes.
So let's, so let's try to invite, that'd be good to know, if we can invite them to the next meeting, maybe.
This is our new building inspector.
Yeah.
I mean, that's like the person that overlaps with us the most, so we should know who they are.
Yep, I, uh...
All right, are we ready to go on to the, the schedule the next meeting?
Sure.
So, if this person, is this person gonna be part-time or full-time?
What person?
The building inspector, the new guy?
Oh, he's gonna be full-time.
He'll be full-time?
Yes.
So is this a transition period, is that it, or something?
I, I think he has some, he, he had reasons that he couldn't be working full-time right now, but it wasn't from the town, it was his, was that Max?
I don't know, he'd be able to, I was just wondering why we don't, with all the, with the stormwater, and with all the other things that we have some input on, but we don't seem to have any means of enforcement, um, why wouldn't we pay part of the inspector's salary, or, you know, rather, cause the select board's doing what the select board wants to do?
Well, that's what'll happen anyways.
And that's where we're, we're always the poor cousin.
Well, I think that the, the building department, that's already their job, is, cause they're also the zoning enforcement agent. So, you know, the things that we say we need to do, we just need them to go out and enforce it.
Right.
And, and I'll be the first to admit that sometimes that doesn't always happen. But, on the other hand, they do watch, and I know that recently, they, um, the, the health agent and the building inspector have made a couple of joint trips to different, uh, properties in town to do inspections and updates, and, um, you know, I know that they've been, uh, um, there's been a lot of, um, we don't hear about it, but there's been a lot of oversight at the condo project on, uh, you know, Sugarloaf Street.
Well, next, next month, September second is Labor Day.
So that's a...
So, and then, the ninth, are we gonna go?
Well, I think I got an email, I wish I had it, um, is the ninth might be a special election.
It is.
So, um, I think we have to pick a whole nother day again, which is always troublesome.
Mm-huh.
What are we specially electing?
Or they're gonna try for their nineteen million dollars again.
Again?
For the water, for the sewer, sewer system.
It's gonna be like the Deerfield Elementary School, just keeps coming back, until they get what they want.
Well, we get, we get, uh, we get told to evacuate here, just, just beginning, the end of last week, when they hit the gas line, putting new water line into the, into the new DPW garage.
What, what? They were putting a new water, oh, oh, okay.
They put a whole new water line in from Sugarloaf Street.
Down, yeah, I know.
Down there, to...
And they hit the gas line?
Hit the gas, somebody hit the gas line, and they came over and says, "You must leave..."
So do we go to a Tuesday or Wednesday?
Well, Wednesday's bad for me, so, and then, uh, Tuesday would be okay, uh, the third. Tenth on Tuesday's bad for me.
Third.
And the fifth, the fifth is okay, but the twelfth is bad on Thursday night.
Well, you, we could try, for the third, I can't make it. That's okay. Fourth, you can't make it, Paul. The tenth or eleventh.
Well, you know, I should double-check on that, that, that may not be correct. I'll, I'll double-check on the fourth, is the fourth okay?
I mean, today's the early August, that's, that would be s- six weeks go by. I mean, I don't know what, you know, it's no big things happening, so...
I mean, you could go backwards, too, for that matter.
Yep, keep cut on the twenty-sixth, I'm not coming back with it.
Oh, you're gonna be out of town?
Yeah.
Okay, well, but this...
The other way, you go to the sixteenth, and then you lose Roger often on the, if it's not the first Monday.
Yeah. Well, I'm going to look at the fourth and double-check that, if you think the fourth will work. I may, I, I may, that may be clear for me, it may not be.
Yeah, I could actually, I should put a doodle out there and just, like, if we do the...
I've heard of those doodles.
If I do the fourth and the tenth, maybe put that out there, and see if we can get five, you know, if we can get five people for one of them, then we just do it.
Sure, sure.
You might, usually on the Wednesdays would be a select board meeting, so...
Had to check if that was that Wednesday.
I don't know.
Is it every other, or is it a...
It's every other, it has been, I've been, I've been watching.
And is it the first and third, or the second and fourth?
No, and actually, I think that the fourth, they do, but I'm not sure, because I think they're gonna, they're gonna have, uh, informational thing about the sewer...
Oh, getting ready for the ninth, yeah.
So you're thinking the choice would be the, the third or the tenth, right?
Yeah, yeah, well, let's just do the third or the tenth.
Okay, I'm, I'm sure I'm out the tenth.
Anything else?
So do you wanna, so you wanna, Kate's gonna be the third or the tenth here on the...
Third or the tenth, and I'll, I'll put an email out to make sure we get at least, you know, five, five or six people saying yes.
Next meeting is nine, three, or nine, ten, at seven PM.
And I'll make a note to see if they can invite the, uh, new building inspector.
I'll see, and tomorrow I'll ask him to.
Is he inspecting your building, or?
I'm, I'm coming downtown, all the secrets still, talk to her about the, uh, Weston Sampson.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.